I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of March 15th. And we will also be acting as the Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And again, if we could just have a few moments of silence for the people of Ukraine. Please be seated. And if we could have the roll call, please.
Councilmember De La Rosa.
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Here.
Councilmember Ponce.
Here.
Mayor Protem Cassidy.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here.
And for the record, we also have our city attorney Scott Campbell.
Hi Scott.
Hello.
Okay. Announcements and written communications? Are there any? By either of you?
No written communication do I have.
Nothing at this time.
You're good, okay, thank you.
Later I'll make announcements on the election.
Excellent. Okay, so we have a presentation today. We have Luke Shaner from Southern California Edison, and he's going to provide us a water availability and allocation update. Thank you and welcome.
All right. Good afternoon, mayor members of council. It's an honor to be here and return to provide the water update following up the preliminary information shared in January. One housekeeping item to note is what I'm presenting on right now, it represents a small portion of our Catalina water system, just a small part of the diverse Catalina III utility network. It is subject to change, relies on the latest data constraints and assumptions, but part of the reason we're here is to help share information, especially as conditions change, to keep everybody in tune with the latest information that we have. And it's good to be here in person. I found it after a couple of years, was wondering if I was going to get lost, but I did not. This presentation is going to focus on three areas. First is going to be the Middle Ranch reservoir status and 2022 water use trends. I have one slide for that. I have one slide for the D-Sal enhancements Phase 1 project, and then I have a few slides related to the water availability and allocation plan update. First, if you could look at the graphic on the left of the screen, this represents the Middle Ranch reservoir level back to 2011 to today, which is the vertical green line, and then projected out what the level might be with persistent drought conditions. What you see recently is a short-term recharge event that happened in late December and into January. However, we are back into a drawdown condition where we see the level drop, and after not seeing any drop in December, just over five acre feet in January, and 12.7 acre feet in February, and kind of expect that to continue, especially with the nice weather we've been having. The key takeaway there is the stage 1 forecast is now the summer of this year, so late June, July timeframe. And then want to focus attention to the graphic on the right, which shows the 2022 water usage compared to 2021. There's numbers above those bar charts, so blue is 2022, orange is 2021, and then the numbers are the year-to-date variance for 2022 compared to 2021. Now, it's important to note, it's hard to really put the months and year in perspective here, especially looking back with COVID, but late December of 2020, January through February of 2021 was a time of heightened COVID restrictions. We saw that within our company, within our island operations, so we expect to see this drastic variance as we see there. We hope that does not continue, and if it does, we're actually likely going to set like a 15-year max production for the water system, for the Middle Ranch Avalon Toyon water system. 2021, looking back, was the highest water production year, all the way back to 2007. So it's an important opportunity to take the time here to just engage and raise awareness to conservation now, as a good time as ever, and especially as we go into the peak season. The number I have there is the general number that many customers are privy to, but that's what you call if you see something, if you see a leak, if something doesn't look right, if there's a questionable connection to a hydrant, water on the ground, please call that number, that puts you in a connection with our customer service department, they'll be ready to take the information and relay that to the control room on the island here to quickly dispatch resources. Some of the items that will be requested or clarified during that call, you'll be reminded to stay 100 feet away from water, and if it's a large volume to, and potentially dangerous, call 911 as well. Then they'll also ask for where is the leak, is it near any electrical equipment? They'll ask if it's freshwater or saltwater. Will handle freshwater, the city handles saltwater. And where is it? Is it upstream or downstream of the meter? If it's downstream, it's typically the customer's responsibility, and then, you know, contacting a plumber, but if it's upstream, or if it's a question, you know, water operators will look into that. And the link, there is a hyperlink there, and that's additional tips from California in terms of conservation strategies to consider. Moving on to the next slide, the Catalina D-Sal enhancements project.
I'm sorry, Luke, should we save our questions to the end?
No, all, are there any questions on this slide?
Just on the first one, because the water trend for 2022, so June or July, we would go into Phase 1.
Stage 1, correct.
And when are you, no more rain, assuming, when would we be looking at Phase 2?
Stage 2, based on that chart, is late 2023, early 2024.
Wouldn't go into Phase 2 until then?
Correct.
And does that take into consideration any production from Plant 1 or 2, or is that strictly a drawdown on the reservoir?
It does. We actually soften the drawdown to account for increased D-SAL. And as you can see there, so it's, and you look at the last drought, slightly more accelerated drop there, but just a little bit. It doesn't reflect any, the D-Sal enhancements Phase 1 project coming online, which I'll get to next, but we are targeting to try to commission that, not either at or not long after we would be approaching Stage 2. And with that increased D-SAL capacity coming in, as well as hopefully increased operational history of D-SAL Plant 2 at a higher capacity, we're able to soften the Stage 2 rationing requirement. So those are all things we're keeping on the priority list, don't necessarily need to dispatch anything this year, but as we focus on other things, but definitely in the hopper for next year in advance of that event. Are we okay with moving to the next slide here?
Yes, please.
So Catalina D-Sal enhancements certainly relevant to water supply conditions, water allocation plan, and, you know, it's super critical to strengthening drought resiliency on the island. We see strengthening drought resiliency accomplished by increasing D-SAL production and offsetting groundwater reliance. The current industry guidance and the target we have for Catalina is to achieve a seven-year drought resiliency rating by the time the first phase of D-Sal enhancements completes, and that's in comparison to roughly four-and-a-quarter-year drought resiliency rating today. So drastically different, drastically better. And, you know, there's a multitude of projects that can be done as it relates to D-SAL, strategic upgrades. And what we've done previously is that many might recall the 2007 Catalina D-SAL feasibility study, also last year we prepared the 2021 drought contingency plan. So these have helped reaffirm the scope and the phase implementation of D-SAL enhancements on the island. We look to continue and formalize that in our Water Utility Master Plan, which we're working on this year, and hope to finalize either later this year or next year. When I go back to the Phase 1 enhancements, that scope includes increasing our seawater well capacity from 400 gallons per minute to 750 gallons per minute, to increasing our D-SAL treatment plant, or upgrading our D-SAL treatment plant so that we improve the pre-reverse osmosis treatment and post-RO treatment components, so that we could increase the system's uptime rate. And that means operating for, so last year, I think we achieved 80% to 85% uptime rate, so 80% of 365 days the plant was on producing water. Those upgrades will help us increase that to, say, 90% or above, and on a consistent basis. So those are the types of upgrades we're looking at under Phase 1, as well as a distribution component. The distribution component is not as impactful as the seawater wells and the treatment plant upgrades to improve D-SAL production, but it is important, and we see the opportunity here in adding a fourth tank near the three existing tanks in Falls Canyon. This would bring the nominal storage there from 375,000 gallons to 500,000 gallons. Moving to the right, you see the milestone schedule for the D-Sal enhancements Phase 1 project. It's a little small, so I'll highlight the key dates, and what I haven't read is what has changed since the last time I presented this table, and that's our permit application submittal. We are still finalizing that, we are further along than we were a couple of months ago. We anticipate getting that in early April, so less than a month out, and that kind of sets the stage for all the subsequent tasks. We factor an 18-month lead time for permitting, and with that, see this system coming online early 2024. And then you see that blue box on the bottom, that's where we're monitoring the, when this would commission, and when that Stage 2 drought forecast is. When you look to the bottom left there, you kind of see what the Phase 1 enhancement project looks like compared to what's been done in the past and what's being planned for the future. So Plant 1, so all the blue bars represent average production. Plant 1, 111 acre feet, I think it's gone up to 180 acre feet, best case in its history. Plant 2, the five-year average, 178 acre feet, as much as 203 acre feet, I think, on a max year. And then with the Phase 1 enhancements, we look to achieve an average yield of around 317 acre feet per year. The future enhancements, Phase 2 targets Plant 1 replacement with new technology. Phase 3 targets increasing the seawater well capacity and upgrading the transmission line to the plant. And then Phase 4 represents the Wrigley Pipeline, having the bidirectional pipeline to flow water to or from Wrigley Reservoir.
I have a question.
Yes.
If you're moving on to the next one. So the Prop 1 money that Edison got, the $12 million, is there any left? I mean, because you got that money a few years back, and you're probably doing studies and everything else. Is any of that money left to do these things?
That's the one thing I didn't mention on this slide, so that's the right question. Of the 12.3 million Prop 1 money, 2.3 is allocated towards Plant 2. 10 million is allocated towards the Phase 1 enhancements, and that's the limit of the grant award. We haven't received any of that money yet, that's reimbursed from the state. This year, we, you know, applied a couple of years back, last July and September, we finalized the funding agreement with DWR, and this year, we're scheduled to prepare the reports and invoices, so we'll start to see money come in, fully invoice for Plant 2, and start the invoice process for the Phase 1 enhancements.
I mean, do you imagine, though, that the expenses for all of this are going to be in excess of that $12 million?
So the Phase 1 project, it's 12.71 million, so there's a 2.71 million delta. That's not covered by the DWR project. We did, there was an opportunity through the Watersmart program, a federal funding opportunity, we submitted, I think it was a $1.2 million grant request for. We expect a decision on that in a couple of months, but yeah, looking for opportunities to maximize alternative funding to make up the delta.
Thank you.
And then whatever is not in there, I think, is what you'll see reflected in the current GRC, the general rate case, has the Phase 1 project.
Luke, is it possible to get a copy of these slides emailed? And then, just a question also, why was I under the impression that the dual movement of storage between Wrigley wasn't happening any further, that there was a feasibility study done, and that wasn't successful, or wasn't showing as feasible?
Not in the Phase 1 project, but it is feasible, like, in the Phase 3 or Phase 4. Right here, it's represented in the Phase 4. So it is an important project, but the capital versus the incremental water production, it can't compete with those other scope at this time.
Thank you.
All right, the third of the three items, the water allocation plan update. So our objective here is to provide the current status of water availability and SCE's approach to both satisfying the water allocation waitlist and strengthening drought resiliency within the system. Those are two important items. What I'm presenting on today has to do with the Middle Ranch Avalon Toyon Integrated System. This represents a system of highest demand, the most customers. It also is a system with the most resilient water sources, obviously with D-Salination, but even Middle Ranch, those wells, they're the most resilient groundwater wells on the island. We do anticipate expanding the analysis and the assessment to factor other systems, like the Isthmus West End system, the Blackjack system, and the White's Landing system, just so we have very similar information prepared for those. We plan to do that as part of our Water Master Plan development throughout this year and next year. But whatever you see on these slides here speaks solely to the Middle Ranch Avalon Toyon system.
Can I just ask a brief question on that? Is Edison looking at providing allocations in those other water systems?
At this time, based on this update, no.
Okay.
And then once we prepare the water balance and conduct this assessment, at that time we'll be communicating either the surplus or deficit condition, and if anything is, if and what is needed in order to provide allocations to those systems.
Okay.
But I don't have that today. And just a quick background, Rudy's got a lot going on, some of this has been shared in the past. Last May, I was here, and I shared kind of a similar update that highlighted our water availability methodology that we were rolling out based on industry guidance, consultation with industry experts, and then, you know, wherever there is deviations, or maybe items weren't clarified in our utility tariffs, we submitted an advice letter to achieve that alignment with our utility tariffs. And so that update was at City Council in May. The advice letter was Advice Letter 123W. It was not as easy as 123. We submitted in January and we got a decision in December, but we did close it out, and it was approved. And it was important because that added D-SAL to our tariffs. D-SAL is now represented in the Schedule Freshwater Yield. It actually defined the methodology for calculating water availability, so that you could, you know, to support allocations in the future. And it also formalized and recognized the physical isolation points within the system that wasn't present in the tariff support. It's been present in the operations of the system, but not in the utility tariffs. So you could kind of see that the Isthmus West End system isn't connected to the Middle Ranch Avalon Toyon system, so we took the one number and broke it out into two numbers in that update. As of February, and even probably as of last week, noting there that our current water allocation waitlist within this system is 32 requests. They associate with the water requirement about 33.7 acre feet per year. As of this month, and our refresh to that water availability methodology, essentially taking all the data since our last update, so data through the end of year 2021, and putting it in that water calculation, we actually see a slight improvement from what we shared in May. We saw where we had an average day surplus of 27 acre feet, that's gone up to a surplus of about 33.41 acre feet. On a max day basis, when we had this calculated last year, we actually had just a slight deficit, 36,900 gallons per day. With the refresh, that deficit has actually become a surplus of about 117,000 gallons per day. And so without a deficit in either of those categories, that puts us in a position to support a small amount of water allocations. And so roughly the first 30 of 32 requests, I mean, I think it fell short by about 0.3 acre feet. But, and then also strengthening the drought resiliency from four years to 4.25 years. And then lastly, just want to highlight some ongoing activities that'll just continue to improve the water availability. The regulatory and administrative updates, I think what Councilmember Cassidy alluded to with those adjustments to Stage 2 to reflect D-SAL, so that's those types of items, it's our Advice Letter 123W that we're currently implementing. The Water Master Planning, recently completion of the drought contingency plan, and continuing that momentum with the Comprehensive Water Utility Master Plan. Water resource improvements, namely the D-Sal enhancements project, and then non-revenue water management. That's water that is consumed by the system, not by sales, but through other ways, through flushing, through, or system flushing, line flushing, through hydrant testing, through leaks, through inaccurate data or meters, and things like that. So right now, we're in the midst of a meter replacement program, and we have, we're actually putting together stronger performance reports to help leveraging a customer service replatform project I completed last year, has given us greater performance visibility on the system, and so that's going to help us monitor different aspects in order to troubleshoot or detect anomalies and try to improve both the data and, you know, balance the system there. Any questions on that?
I don't know how many years ago it was, but Edison put a water restrictor on my meter thing, somewhere down there, and then it was every once in a while, how does it work? And I'm like, well, I don't know, there's only two of us in the house, I really don't notice any difference. But are you pursuing those water restrictors, and is that a possibility for people to have them on?
Now, I believe that comes into play in Stage 2.
Okay.
Of the Rule 14.1's tariff rationing plan, I believe that's when those come into play.
But not water restrictor, like, really, mine just, I don't think mine was like a water restrictor, like I was being punished. It was like, it just kind of reduced the flow a little bit of it, and maybe that's what the other ones did, I didn't have to have those other ones on. So what if somebody wanted them before and didn't want to wait?
I mean, it's not a bad idea. I mean, yeah, there's probably the opportunity for like a conservation workshop, identify what all is available and what it can do proactively, so.
Do we still have at City Hall some of the water flow restrictors and the showerheads and whatnot that Edison gave us years ago?
I'm not sure if we have any left yet.
Oh, okay. I'll reach out again and see if maybe we can do an influx of them.
I'm thinking that we went through all of them.
Yeah, okay.
So, go ahead. So, we all got a letter from Edison about the water thing, and talked about, in the general rate case, how much it would increase every month. Is that in response, maybe it's a double or triple question, is that in response to preparing for the general rate case that's going on? Is that to recoup, to get that money? Is that all that?
So I'm not the GRC expert, but I do believe it does not associate with the general rate case that's ongoing right now. That actually does not have a decision, and not until there's a decision will then there be an update and notification of what's going to happen in the rates. What I believe that communication was, has to do with our annual true-up of our sales, the actual sales compared to our forecast. So if 2021 received more sales revenue than we thought, then we'd be adjusting rates down.
Right.
To not over-collect. If we received less revenue than we forecasted, we would need to increase to address that delta, which I suspect that might be what happened there. And what that does, it helps it calibrate year to year, so that a four-year balance doesn't accrue either like a large credit or a large.
I see.
Deficit.
Okay. So then, so let's say you get this money, and then we find out that we're using less, but in the meantime, we have like the general rate case that will be resolved, hopefully at some point in the future, and then everything will change again, pretty much.
That's an event that'll change things. And again, I know, I believe Councilmember Lavelle brought this question up before too, and it's a good question, it's like, well, if you conserve, and then you're kind of punished because you're under-collecting. And we did look into that, I don't think there was like a perfect solution that is available today that water utilities are actively using. One tactic can be, you could just, it's your rate schedule or structure, and you could structure your rate so that, say, 50% of it is just fixed, and then 50% is variable, and then that variable amount depends on usage. So what you can do is you could increase your fixed rate, I think right now it's 30 to 40%, and then the variable is the rest, so it incentivizes conservation, so if you conserve water, you'll see it in your bill. If you increase the fixed portion, while it helps prevent, sways year to year if you're conserving water, it kind of creates a less of an incentive and dollar benefit for the customer saving throughout the year. So I don't have the solution right now, but it's, again, one of those things to try to balance and see what makes, what's most appropriate for the island.
So Annie, to answer your question, this is a separate rate case that's being filed for that.
Yep.
And Luke, it's not fair to put you on the spot, but I just want to answer the question because I have it in front of me, that it really shows, it's confusing, because in one section it shows a 13% increase in summer, 6% increase in winter, and then down below it talks about a 4% increase overall. I mean, realistically, it's about $3 a month increase, but it is separate. And I think it would behoove us to have a conversation separate from this one on, you know, what the impacts really are, because it's, I mean, you know, as a business owner, I would love to be able to forecast that I'm going to make $15 million this year, and when I don't make it, I'd love for someone to pitch in and help me get to that number. That's just really hard for everyone to really grasp onto, you know? As we know, everything is increasing, so, and we already have the other rate case out there, so I'd be curious to know how those correlate with each other, and what we think realistically is doable for our community.
And the goal is, through this new letter, which I, that's in an effort to raise how much money with all of the increases?
You know, I believe it's just to cover the cost of service, but I think there's an opportunity here to just have a slide prepared, provide additional information. I can't do it justice, certainly, but.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Sharing the information, mutual understanding is important, so.
Yeah, no, appreciate that a lot.
Okay.
Is there anybody there that has any questions? No? Okay. Anybody in the audience have a question, or for Luke? Council? We good? Yessenya?
I just had a couple of questions as well. So, just looking at visitor counts, which we usually get just before the meeting this time of the month, from the previous month, and looking at visitor counts in a busier year where water usage was not as high, but there were more people here, looking at re-upping the Chamber, the Love Catalina team's efforts in water conservation, seeing if we can check with Catalina Express, the flyer, and even the helicopters, and reminding people that we're heading towards a drought rapidly, trying to find some way to get rid of my frustration at the fact that we're going to get charged more money because we save more water. I don't know what the answer to that is, and that's extremely frustrating, and Luke, I understand where you're coming from and what you're saying. And I, Luke, I understand where you're coming from and what you're saying, but yes, I think that needs to be looked at in terms of having something that doesn't penalize people for doing well at something we want them to do, which is what it feels like right now, especially when you're usually looking, if I recall correctly, the standard is to look at two years prior to your water usage in terms of what you're looking at for water usage. I'm assuming that there will be some allowance for that not to be the COVID year that we look at for water usage because that means every hotel that had no occupancy is going to be at zero water percentage.
Good point.
So if we can at least make sure that there's an appropriate average that utilizes that heaviest year because that makes sense. But that was a point of like coming into that, I was like, okay, keep it calm. It's fine. Keep it calm. But that's, you know, you're tending to penal, it doesn't, it's not a penalty. I understand it's not meant to be a penalty, but it feels like a penalty when that's the boat that we're in and we've known for forever that we want to increase storage and everything that you guys are working towards is encouraging, but just frustrating that we're back in this loop again and again and again and again and again. So I don't know if there's ways to, again, discuss water savings for people who are using it during off-peak hours so that the uptime you have built into the, to the DSal units can be utilized during times where you can't make storage. You can still use that and have that be a more, better, a better use of things. If there's certain things that we can do like that to really incentivize that and be able to make this more manageable for everybody, I think that would be something to do, so. And then just curious too, when you're talking about the non-revenue water management, I don't know that there's significant hydrants. I don't know how much of that percentage makes that up, if it's possible to get that information. But, you know, is it leaks? Is it loss due to evaporation? Is it, what is it actually that's causing all of that? Because that seems like a little bit more significant than what I would have imagined. But I appreciate you coming as always. Thank you so much. It's good to see you in person.
And those are good. I mean, I take notes of all those to help prepare the next update. And definitely, like you mentioned, the baseline considerations, that is one area. We don't want it to be, we want to optimize that. We don't want it to be unreflected if you're in a COVID year. We don't want to incentivize somebody to increase usage just so they have a healthy baseline. So actually, we're looking, that policy adjustment or that deadline to file that advice letter is well ahead of the stage two rationing event. But I mean, I think it's on our list to start to draft some language there and we see as, once that's drafted, you know, having dialogue and getting feedback on that to making sure it meets kind of some of the key concerns there. You also mentioned on the storage, I did want to clarify with the demand trends we're seeing right now, we are maximizing DSal production. They can't produce enough DSal to meet Avalon demand that's connected to the Baker storage there in Falls Canyon. It's when you kind of get into those strong portions of stage two and stage three in the winter season that you might approach periods where demand outpaces, or I mean, DSal production outpaces demand. Obviously, we don't want to re-enter that now that we have that operational history and that's what helps informs an adjustment to the rationing and filing those advice letters to see those changes and just try to balance the system. But so I noted for a future update, kind of the conservation strategies workshop and then also the annual rate adjustment, kind of the two key areas to delve into there.
I have one other question. You talked about the water allocation. So when will, and it looks like like 30 of them, 30, you could do 30 to 30, 30 allocation?
Yeah.
So when is that, when is, when they, we're going to start throwing those out the door?
So I have a slide later, but I'll get to it now. You keep me
Oh, you're not done. I'm sorry. You said you had
No, that was the first of a few. I had one slide for the other one, this has three.
I'm sorry.
So this is the line item that associates with the water allocation, water availability. So you can see the supply conditions on the top, the demand, which is made up of sales, non-revenue water, and committed allocations that have not fully been represented in the sales history. And this, you know, some key takeaways here, this is the current condition based on the methodology. It's set to expire December 31st of 2022, at which point we would then update it based on the data collected through 2022. And we'll come back and present that and we'll see what's changed or if the changes and what they are. I also wanted to clarify because there's been questions in the past, the safe annual yield, the freshwater yield. So that associates with those columns you see in the average day, the annual supply capacities. So Middle Ranch Wells at 316.5 acre feet per year, the Petal Beach DSal facility has 178.7, and the Toian Canyon well at 12.9 acre feet per year. Now, there's the 600 acre feet per year that I think many have become attuned to, and then that increased to 636 in this last advice letter. And that's essentially a safe annual yield limit, subject to change as conditions on the islands change over time. So when that 600 acre foot per year safe annual yield was established, the Middle Ranch Wells had a yield of 372 or a recognized yield of 372. The, in order to increase drought resiliency, the system needs to reduce groundwater reliance. And so that's what you see here, reducing that. And then on top of that, in 2008, there's a hydraulic study completed that associated the Middle Ranch Wells with 350 acre feet per year capacity at a four-year drought resiliency. So what we want to do is improve the drought resiliency, kind of throttle down that groundwater reliance, and at the same time, increase DSal reliance up to the safe annual yield limit and up to what it could actually do. We don't want to say DSal is always going to be 300 acre feet per year when we can't do that. So 178.7 is a five-year average. We expect to see that keep increasing as we get more and more operational history. The last two years, I mean, the operation seems does an excellent job finding ways to improve the uptime and production that they've set highs each of the last two years, all-time highs for Catalina. So I think we could max out based on our current tariffs, DSal at around 206 acre feet per year here, and we're, so we're making strides there. And then also, we need to measure the health of the system on a max day and a peak hourly demand basis too, but you see there is adequate buffer there. The last sheet of this deck has some more detailed assumptions and key considerations into what these numbers mean. And then below that, you could see what the waitlist tally is for the system. And we're, you know, we're going to get through a lot of it. Because we're so close, we are going to be monitoring it on a monthly basis to see what the empirical data shows us over March, over April, over May. Because if there is the opportunity that the empirical data shows us a calibration is needed, that kind of relaxes some of it, you know, that may, may support closing out the remaining requests on the waitlist. But we'll need a take a wait and see approach on those two.
We're talking another 90 days at least.
Yes. And so, so we're communicating out this month, later this month and into April, we'll be getting those letters out, especially to those first 30 that are within that availability. And, and then later this month, we're also, I mean, we performed outreach with, so right now, we're closing the loop with city council with the Avalon community. The last two weeks, we met with city staff, we met with Catalina Island Company, we met with the Catalina Island Conservancy. And so now that we've presented this to the community, we want to also share the high, the key takeaways with our regulators, so the Division of Drinking Water and the California Public Utilities Commission, just to keep everybody aware and in case there's questions and we could keep addressing those proactively.
So are you seeing or maybe you're not seeing the people that are on the list on number one, two, three, four? I'm assuming most of those, and maybe the planning department is here, but I mean, most of those aren't done plans. I would imagine that they are not done plans. Zero. So does that mean that people should optimistically start looking, at least the first few on the list? Creating their design and creating their, because if you're 90 days out and then, I mean, as you know, housing is absolutely terrible here. And so the more little housing stock we can get on, whether it be accessory dwelling units or whatever, we really need to go, and those aren't going to be that complicated, I don't think. So I don't know when we can say, okay, you know, start ramping up.
Well, I think there are plans, I've seen some plans, but they may not have been submitted yet because they need a water allocation to go with it in order to take the process further.
However, remember, we allowed people to build without a water allocation because we wanted to keep everybody working, remember, a long time ago? So they really could start, start giving up plans because Suzanne says they don't have any, any plans in the book.
We have some at various stages.
Various stages, okay. Yeah, okay.
I believe the goal here is that we just coordinate the necessary activities to not miss the opportunity and the condition here to put in necessary motion the allocation letter, which will help probably customers prepare more formal plans.
Okay.
I mean, a condition of that allocation is that it's coordinated with authority having jurisdiction, in this case, the city. They'll get the necessary approvals. So we expect that process to roll out. So we'll, but we will have each request within those first 30 will have that allocation letter
Right.
To attach to their, their developing plans.
Yeah, excellent.
And I mean, it's, the last time we issued an allocation was 2014. Some of these requests are backdated to that time. So we expect there's going to be some calibration as we go through this. Maybe it'll even, who knows, it might shrink some of that, the demand there. But we expect to kind of play that process out over the next couple of months.
And I don't know if you have the answer to this one. So let's say I'm on the list and I decide I don't want to build, or is there a time limit in which they have to use their allocation before somebody else pops in?
I believe it's 18 months.
Okay.
Subject to, it could be extended with the appropriate deliverables or evidence there. Mary Schickling is our resident expert. She, I got her permission for her email on this slide. And so if there's questions related to the water allocation process or is there a new request from the customer, you know, reach out. These are the key steps there. We'll receive a request, we'll, we will issue a letter. If water's not available, we'll also issue a letter stating that, that we put them on the waitlist. And at which time there is water available, we'll reach out to them again saying, you know, there is water for their request. And then our planner and the applicant will coordinate the building plans, the new service requirements. And then obviously before, you know, once the occupancy permit's issued from the city, we'll drop in that new meter.
Great.
The, oh, sorry, I was just going to ask, the current goal right now is to move from about four years of drought resiliency to 4.25 with the current set of stages that you're going to be looking at doing, right?
Correct.
What is that, what is, is there an average that most municipalities or cities or water entities on the mainland have for theirs and how, where are we in terms of that?
Yeah, good question. With our benchmarking, we found that right now, it's anywhere from five years to seven years. So we're making strides towards that five-year mark and then also keeping line of sight on the seven-year. And so it's roughly by 2024, we expect to be at that seven-year mark.
And then that 2008 hydraulic study that you mentioned, is that on the website as well to view?
I believe it's been shared in the past and I believe, which means it could be shared again. I will caveat that the water master plan we're doing this year, we're going to really look at that and calibrate those key assumptions and kind of prepare an updated executive summary too, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Does anybody want me to, I could skip this slide or I could explain it. Did I put this in here to help people fall asleep during my presentation? I've shared it before, but happy to share it again if it helps.
I'm okay, but go ahead.
I'm okay.
Okay.
Okay. Be sensitive to time. Talked about the sequence of steps and then just wanted to highlight other areas and critical next steps over the next several months here. I talked about the stakeholder outreach. We talked about the allocation letters will be, we're actually looking at that allocation letter template, the water questionnaire template, seeing how that could be updated based on the last drought and lessons learned. So we'll be rolling out those new communications shortly, based on what allocations are granted. That might prompt new service planning studies as needed just to make sure the system's being built out appropriately. And also what I wanted to highlight with the water utility master planning, we're going to really zero in on those perennial yields, the safe annual yields for the Middle Ranch well for all the systems, recognizing some time has passed, we have a lot of good history here, recent history to bring in. And we're also going to be looking at the drought resiliency rating. So the numbers I've quoted are based on that 2008 report. I expect they might get adjusted, maybe not the direction we want, but at least they'll be calibrated appropriately with the latest climate data. And so we expect to do that this year. And as mentioned, preparing and submitting the permit application for the DSal enhancements phase one project.
Great.
That concludes, with the exception of the slide I put in backup, but that'll be provided with the copy of the presentation. I thank everyone for their patience and their time going through this long-winded presentation.
It wasn't long-winded.
Any other, any other questions before I?
And Denise, nobody's called in or anything? Okay.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very, very much. It's awesome.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Luke.
You're welcome, Luke.
You going to be able to stay over? You have to stay over?
I'm going to rain check that.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to
Okay. All right. Department head reports, please.
Good evening. Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works, had three items tonight. We're completing some harbor studies this week. So this week, a team of structural ocean and geotechnical engineers will be on the island evaluating three projects, the fuel dock, the green pier, and South Beach seawall. Additionally, a dive team will be on site to evaluate underwater conditions of the timber piles at, the current conditions at the fuel dock and also the green pier. And they'll look at the biological resources in the area of the fuel dock and green pier and South Beach. As part of the geotechnical evaluation, the team will evaluate estimated geological conditions down to a depth of 35 to 50 feet on South Beach. So we're looking for that bedrock to be able to have found the seawall there for the repairs. This will use geofones on the surface that are connected to a seismograph. And you may have seen this in other studies where you see some objects on the beach or down just below the surface, and then they're connected by wires to a seismograph. And then they make a noise through a plate or hammer and then they can see those soundings. And so that'll be on South Beach that we're doing that. That way, we don't have to bring a drill rig over and do borings, which could be very expensive. We can get what we need out of that and it'll occur on 316, 317. So during that time, there may be a period of time where South Beach is closed in that area and we'll get everybody over to Middle Beach that wants to use the beach, okay? They only occur during those two days. Five Corner, last week, received a loan bid for the Five Corner utility in grading phase and it was three times the engineer's estimate. So we're going to recommend going out to rebid. I think it was just the contractor threw some numbers in there, being the loan bid. We did not have any local bidders on the island bidding the project, which I think that could have helped us. So you'll see that going out to rebid. And then the mole lights, the big lights that have the triple heads on them, they're at the mole floats. Two of those failed at the pole to plate connections during the recent gale force winds. So they were not vertical anymore. So John Gilbert led the removal of one light and a swap out of a second one on float five with the support of Harbor Maintenance and Public Works staff members. We're going to, and so now we're short a few of those lights and so we're going to go to the top of the pergola, right at the gate. And we've ordered lights that are on hand now and we're going to install two of them tomorrow and there will be four in total by the time that we're done so that we can start using floats one and two again this weekend. So in anticipation of that, because the Catalina Express is adding boats. So we want to get that done for this weekend.
So those poles will be gone, right? Those big
They'll be gone, but
They'd be going anyway, right?
They'd be going anyway, but they're, it's lucky we didn't have a disaster out there.
I saw them.
Yeah, so, and it was great, hey, our team went out there and got it done and was clever enough to say, hey, we could swap this out, bolt this up and we're back in business. we could swap this out, bolt this up, and, and we're back in business. And I guess it was also lucky that floats one, two, and three were not being used at that time. That was the one piece of luck that we did have, so. Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Who's that? David you're standing at? Oh, here, I'm sorry.
Good evening, everyone. Warren Cross Staff and Harbor Master. Since my last report, Harbor Maintenance Crew has connected one of floats one and two at the mole, attaching the lines back to the shore, adding, or adjusting the chains and then adding the necessary plating to receive the ramps. On Monday, I went over to Larson Boat Shop or Shipyard on the mainland to review the steelwork being completed on mole float three. The deck corrosion on that float was quite extensive, so much of the angle iron supports are going to need to be cut out and replaced. And that's already being done as we speak. Ultrasonic readings of the flotation tanks were also taken throughout the hull structure, and all readings showed little to no degradation of the materials. So the sealing paints and epoxies that are being used on those flotation tanks are holding up well. The zincs that are kept on those attachments to the tanks and the upkeep on that all really has done a good job at keeping the corrosion at bay. We are on schedule at this time to have float three back at the end of the month. So that covers that float. And then since my last report, patrol moored 249 boats for a total of 1,264 nights. Patrol responded to three medical calls, warned and advised six individuals municipal code violations, did 21 public assists and 137 security patrols of the facilities.
Wow.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
I think we're good, thank you. So David Hart, David Hart. What's this?
It's a kind of infection. We're good, yeah.
Good evening, city staff, mayor, and council. Mike Willegria, Fire Chief. Just want to remind everybody, city sticker permits last day, March 31st, April 1st, Friday will be closed. So March 31st, the last date. CPR classes for the community, again, March 30th, April 13th, and May 12th. We worked, Denise and I before, worked with Herlinda Chico and Janice Hahn's office, and we got about 200 COVID tests. Yessenya helped distribute those to the, to the people in the community that wanted them. We just got another shipment. I know it's kind of late, but if people want a home test to keep an eye on it, contact me at the station. And we've got a bunch, or Yessenya, and we have some that to still pass out. Friday, well, this will lead to this. So we got some feedback on parking on Tremont. These two photos just show in general, people park next to a hydrant. Are we going to do that? Probably not, we're getting in trouble, but you never know. If we need to, we're going to move the car, we're going to do what we have to do. But we also have to remember, we have a ladder truck. And the ladder truck, if we need big water, that Edison's going to give us, the salt water's going to give us, we need the boot, we need to have the room to put the ladder, the ladder truck up. As far as Tremont, there's some numbers I'll get to in a minute, but there's also, there's a parking lot where new Tremont and old Tremont meet. And then we're still working on some abandoned vehicles on the right where old Tremont meets new Tremont on there. There's some abandoned vehicles we're working on getting rid of. So there'll be a little bit more parking down there. Why did we paint it red? Safety. That street was getting really crowded with cars, kids. Safety for us. We've had many calls on that street where we park. And even though there's the slightest bit of room, as we try and go open a door, vehicles are still racing by. So for us, and there's just was not enough room to keep our fire apparatus going through. It was based off around 2013, 14, a trial run. They wanted two-hour parking to help unload groceries and stuff like that. Then it kind of went from there. Parking was required when they built the units. So each unit has a parking spot. There's 69 parking spots, 62 units, and the seven are the large ones for the people with oversized vehicles. Not oversized, just regular vehicles. Some of the spots are longer, they could move up if they have guests. Then we were asked if we could ticket. I spoke with the manager, and they're ordering some stickers. And if we put up the proper signage, it'll just be like someone parking off on the private property or island company property when they're not supposed to. And yes, they are all supposed to be. I spoke this week with Sol Vista, draw on the blank, Bird Park, Triana, they all have stickers for parking, and they don't all have visitor parking. You got to park somewhere else, just like Bahia Vista, just like Hamilton. There's a, there's a handful at Hamilton, but you're not always going to be right next to who you're visiting. This is just an example of how fast, those pictures were taken less than two minutes apart, someone just pulling up, oh, I'm just going to let these people out. And next thing you know, we got cars going up on the sidewalk, cars coming down the street. It was just, that was just, this is just one example. Like this morning, we had a fire call. We had vehicles both sides of the street. We just have to radio ahead, hey, don't come down Clemente, or watch out for this, come down Clarissa, because of stuff that happens. The school, these are just random photos throughout town of all the parking. This is the school. We're still trying to work with the school to make it easier for parents to park and keep the fire lanes open. They did do a fire drill, right? When school let out one day, and it was like actually perfect because it showed, we had the people come up, our rigs come up, and people were just scrambling to try and get out of the way. And it was not, it was not fun. Triana, like I said earlier, there were some issues at Triana. We've been doing regular patrols up there as well as code. And they have auto wet parking, and they have parking up above where their larger vehicles. And now the road is clear, same as Bird Park. Bird Park has stickers. They don't have a sign parking, but they have, they have the sticker to park or else they could be ticketed from there. Another one we're looking at is Country Club Road. We're cut, we're have, we're going to talk about that soon. And off-street parking. This is another spot, somewhere near Catalina Street. Every day, all the time, a lot at night, a lot of people like to pull in and tuck in and park, but we're keeping an eye and trying to keep people from doing that. And we're going to go down and talk to everybody and pass out letters again, and then start ticketing hard later after our meetings. So we have a meeting Friday, city manager, myself, code enforcement, and the sheriffs to start talking about abandoned vehicles, unstickered vehicles. We've started the process on a couple of abandoned vehicles, how to get rid of them, what, what more could we do? We're just, we're going to talk about everything on Friday. We'll put it out on social media. We'll push it out to you guys to pass on. And then I plan, I'd like to go and talk to all the businesses on those lower blocks about parking and stuff we want to enforce and give them the, a warning, right? That's going to be their warning when we go down to talk to them again. I'm not single anyone out, like UPS, Capbev, SEI, Freight, taxis, they're all, we're going to have to go talk to them all, contractors. I'm also, we're meeting with Bob Greenlaw to talk about possible, possible restriping of some of the things down there as well. And then we'll put notices in the paper and get it out. Any questions?
You're awful busy. You're making friends, aren't you?
I just, I just want to make one, the one red that drives me crazy that people park at.
What?
Is the mailbox.
That's on my list.
In front of the post office. That is not a parking spot to go to the post office and check your mail.
But, but it.
But you can, I mean, I have no problem when you stop, run around, throw something in the.
Right, right.
But people will park it, park their golf cart, and go into the post office. That is not a waiting spot to go to the post office.
So the post mistress or postmaster, when I talked with her the other day, was wondering, could it, there just be a 10-minute spot or something for people to check in? Because it is red, so legally you could ticket somebody there.
Yeah. And we have, we, every time I go to the post office and I don't have my ticket machine, I tell people, this is their warning, that my thing's up the street. If I come out and they're still there, they're going to get a ticket. But we will have code, keep passing by.
That, that's the one that drives me crazy.
Oh, that's what.
And I'll see people who will park there and keep their kids in the golf cart, thinking that that's not, you know, they won't get a ticket that way, but.
That, if I would have more time, we would have had, like, the donut, there would have been a lot more, Donut Shop, Eucalyptus, you name it, the mole. We're, we're going to have some meetings to talk about parking on Friday.
Okay. And, and I do know that Margarita was saying that next time they made some improvements, they were going to turn that, turn that around so that you could just drive up and throw your mail in there.
At one ti, at one time, it used to be that you could just throw it in.
There was something about the scoop she said, but whatever, and so they did that. So some point, hopefully.
Well, I know that after 9/11, mailboxes all got weird, and they couldn't open them all the way anymore. And I think that's why they got rid of the.
Oh, wow.
The arm.
Okay.
But yeah, I remember when you used people to just throw something in there.
Yeah.
And that's.
I know, God forbid, snail mail.
That spot confused everybody because it was painted red, but somebody put two-minute parking only, so it, but now it's all red. And it's a safe for there and the other side, because you cannot see vehicles or people coming.
Right.
When you're coming out of the alley.
Yes, yeah, great.
I, I would just like to ask, or, well, first, I would like to say thank you so much for the history on the Tremont one. I didn't really understand it. And it's been green is, is for the whole time that I've lived here, so I didn't really know, and I couldn't respond very well to members of the community who were very upset over that one. So I appreciate that.
It was not, it was green only from about 2013. It used to not be painted because just nobody, people knew just not to park there.
I'm sorry, you're right.
It was always just no color.
Right.
But then it turned green and it went like that.
Okay. The, I, I support making fire lanes, and I support the, the theory behind what you're, what you're trying to do and what you're trying to accomplish. I would just like to ask that you please take into consideration that we do need to allow for some parking. And we can't, if we're going to, I would rather approach it with a solution that, okay, we're going to take this away, but we're going to provide this. Or, or look at options of providing something closer by, like, for example, changing full-size parking spots to golf cart parking spots, you know, something like that. Because it, it feels, it feels very constricting for the right reasons, but I would like to look at how we've allowed all of these vehicles and carts to be here, so they're here. But it would, it would behoove us to look at how can we help make the situation better without just restricting it? If that makes sense, I would just like to ask that you guys consider that in your meetings.
Which part of this are you talking about, though? The residential or the business part of it?
All of it.
Okay.
Because they're, because.
Because for the, for me, for the residential part of it is each residence, not each resident, is entitled to a golf cart.
Right.
So the issue at Tremont is why are there so many golf carts up there when each unit comes?
Right.
With a golf cart or with a space?
Right.
So why are there more than?
I agree with you. Let me give you a very positive example. So last, at the, somewhere last year, you guys really took a good look at the Casino Way going all the way around and then out into Descanso. Descanso has its own parking. There was no reason other than just not wanting to walk that far that we would park on the side of the road. I, I used to park there too, because it was the quickest way to get to the beach as fast as I could. There's no reason why we can't park in the lot. Great, fine, that was done. But as you guys came around the corner, for a moment, it felt like it was being, parking was being taken away. But in reality, what you did was actually create more parking spots by saying, if you park here, more people can park here, versus, don't park on this side, park over here because we're making more spaces. And that's, that was a really positive change that you guys did. So I'm just asking for you to consider that as you, as you meet and talk about other areas.
And that I understand. That I understand.
That, that's all I'm asking for, is just please look, because it, it, the, the feeling is that it's getting taken away and.
But a lot of times, it's.
But a lot of times.
It's been stuff that is just, they've just taken it upon themselves that this is, I can do this.
Right.
Nobody's caught me, so.
Right.
But no, I, I, yes, if.
We, we will.
Thanks.
And then we're trying to get to complete streets, too. So all that comes into play, which hopefully less driving, more walking or bike riding, correct? That's what we say we're going for, so. Bob Greenlaw shaking his head, yes? Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, good evening. Captain Joe Badali from the Avalon Sheriff's Station. And chief, we have your back. And we're going to work collaboratively. We now have a city site machine that they utilize in code and what the chief uses and others use. So all the deputies are trained in using that unit. So we'll assist in, in that endeavor as well, especially in the off-hours that code isn't working, so. Also wanted to share, if you guys can see outside of the podium.
Oh, yeah.
We now have our body cameras. And so we are fully operational. All of our personnel are required to wear the body camera while on duty. And I wanted to share the 11 criteria by which we must activate this device on our uniforms. All vehicle stops, pedestrian stops, all calls for service, responding code three, which is lights and sirens throughout the community. We need to activate our cameras as well. Any foot pursuits, any searches, any arrests, use of force incidents, as well as the transporting of that subject to our booking facility. Suspect victim and witness interviews, and any, any encounter with a member of the public who is uncooperative, belligerent, or otherwise hostile. So the deputies in these instances are required to activate the, the camera. As I shared previously, it buffers back 60 seconds prior to us even activating the camera. So it'll capture things within that 60-second window. Myself nor any of the deputies here are, had the ability to delete, edit any of the footage. So as we dock the camera into the servers, everything's uploaded, we can review, but we cannot edit, we cannot delete anything that the camera captures. So it's all evidence-based, and so far, it's been working great. And so it's, it's just a great tool for all of us to have, as well as, you know, support the sheriff's initiative of transparency, that we're not there to hide anything or show anything that didn't occur. And so we're very happy to have it, and everybody understands it.
Yeah, excellent. Any questions or comments?
I have, since we're talking about tickets, I have a little, another little peeve. Being that I work at Third and Clarissa on weekends, Clarissa's parking on one side of the street and then moves to the other side of the street. If we could get the deputies, especially during the day, if they're not busy, to keep an eye on that. And that this last weekend, we had multiple vehicles that were parked on the wrong side of the street. I don't think any of them got a ticket. And it makes it really difficult when traffic is trying to come down in that, at that, especially at that intersection. So I would really like for, instead of me having to call the station to ask for code to come out, if they could also be vigilant in watching what's going on now that you guys can do tickets.
I'm sure that's passed on, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
One quick question. For the body cameras, how long is the footage kept for? Or is there like a cloud everything's going to be on?
So I don't know in terms of. So I don't know in terms of retention of the data. I'm sure it'll go on for years. We have server space that is going to be capturing all of these. I mean, there's a lot of footage when you think department-wide and all patrol deputies and soon-to-be custody personnel in the jail will be having cameras as well. I'm not exactly sure of that, but I, I know that there's no, from what we were told, any initiative push to, you know, get rid of any of this data. So I, I think it's here for the long haul and we waited this long to get the appropriate servers and cloud to store all this information.
Wow, crazy.
Thank you.
Sure. And then I have one more little thing. I, I had approached you about the kids in the park and the bikes, and they're back out there with the bikes.
And they were throwing rocks when I went out there.
Well, right now, they were just zipping back and forth, so it just. And I know that there's been some concerns about the bullying going on in the park.
Yes.
And my big thing is that that's not their park, that's the community's park. And no one should be bullied or harassed at that location.
Yes.
I understand that the deputies went out and sat out there for a while, but it's just, it's just not right. It's just not right.
No, I totally agree. And I looked into some different programs the department has that may address bullying.
Riding his bike.
I know it's 20 years then. But in terms of being proactive and, or addressing that issue, we learned that it's probably the fifth and sixth graders that are causing those problems. I looked into some of our youth programs and initiatives that we have. We don't have anything that addresses bullying. We have hate-related programs, but not bullying necessarily. I know a lot of private entities do that. The school, the school should be very proactive in, in educating and preventing as well. But we have been maintaining a presence after school, both on campus as well as here within the park and throughout the community. So we've been talking to a number of the youngsters and hope that it's, it's being addressed.
Do you, are there programs, though, like the police athletic leagues or things, so it's positive programs where they're in contact with you, but in a positive relationship?
Yes, we are still looking at forming the Youth Activity League program here on the island. There was a group that did come out and they visited and talked about the funding that they will provide for us. And so we'll, we'll see about initiating that. And I know one of the big programs, especially some of the older want, older kids wanted, was the SCUBA program that the Youth Activity League program provides as well. And I also learned that Long Beach Unified School District, during the cleanup, they have a dive and swim team that's actually part of the curriculum of the school district, which now encompasses our school. So I'll be working that angle as well to see if we can get a collaborative relationship and, and thing, working with both the school as well as the department together.
That's awesome. Great, thank you. Was we good?
Good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Matt Baker, Finance Director. I just wanted to let the public know that visitor-driven revenues through January can be found on the city's website. That's cityofavalon.com/finance. As a reminder, January of last year was significantly impacted by COVID restrictions. So comparing this past January to the January of 2020 or pre-COVID January, our revenues were comparable with our, our pre-COVID levels, but we weren't seeing the same double-digit growth in revenues that we had enjoyed the, the six months or so prior to that. That being said, revenue still exceeded in most cases our budget estimates or at least met our budget estimates. And it was just one month, which, you know, is not necessarily a trend, but it's definitely something we're keeping an eye on as we're building out the budget for next year. But there are a lot of circumstances that come in. January historically is one of our slower months, as well as we're dealing with the Omicron surge just two months ago. Hard to believe, but it wasn't that long ago. And so we are keeping an eye on it. Finance is focused on building out next year's budget, so I've been working closely with Dave on that. And so in the coming meetings, we'll have some more updates on, on where we're at with the budget to get council's feedback, you know, as we build it a little earlier in the process than some years past, so.
Fantastic. Any questions of our Finance Director? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, sorry, quick question. What, did you tell us, are we starting in April for budgets or May?
Tentatively, I was looking at the first meeting in May. We're working on it now. Probably in that meeting, we wouldn't have a full draft, but it'd be more, these are kind of our priority capital improvement projects. This is generally staffing, kind of what we're looking at if we're looking to, you know, add where we're looking to add or if there's any kind of changes to structure, we can talk about that in that meeting. So we're, normally when we're having the budget meetings, it'd be mid-June before, and we'd have an almost finished budget before we'd kind of have those discussions. So we're trying to have those a little earlier in the process. Kind of the challenge is, is, you know, we're, you know, a lot of what we can do is going to be dictated by revenues. And so I'm conflicted on the one hand because I try to give myself as much time to see what the spring looks like when I'm forecasting out into summer and fall. And so last we talked with Dave, we were looking at the first meeting in May, but, you know, we, we definitely can chat offline and if moving that up makes more sense, we could, we could do that.
David Hart, Community Service. The marathon happened this weekend, the first one after COVID. The numbers they had this weekend was a thousand, 1,011 people registered, but approximately 850 competed throughout the three different events, the 5K, 10K, and the marathon. There were 550 people in the 5 and 10K and 330 in the marathon. The event went without any real hiccups, only two medical attentions, sprained ankle and somebody got a little dizzy during the marathon. And overall, it was a great, it was a great event that made the weekend feel like a summer weekend. Update on our street vendors. I have been calling the six vendors to let them know that now that the COVID restrictions have been lifted, we are asking them to now fulfill their four hours per day of, four days a week, as they were required to do under our code. And if they don't, we won't be able to maintain their license and move up the next person. We're looking to, the start date for that is, we're looking to start that during this first spring break.
And how, how many vendors do you?
We have all, we have six. I've, I've got six vendors already.
Already, Rumble?
They're ready to go. One of them's still getting his, his up. And then actually two of, two of them, because we had one person just who received theirs for their merch just about, about a month ago. So he's got, he's got his license done, he's got everything up, he just needs to bring in his insurance. And he's buying a cart right now. So the mercs are real easy. And the other one is, is in the food, the food vending. And his is going to be pretty easy, too, because it'll be prepackaged foods. He's doing ice creams and, and stuff like that.
David, thank you. Thanks for that, Dave.
Yeah, yeah. Also, an update on Spring Fest. We have decided to move Spring Fest to Thursday, April 28. This will give our vendors times to get their license under the LA County Public Health. It has been complicated having to come under the health codes, but we believe we have come to some sort of solution to allow them to be able to get their license for that. And so we have moved the date to help with the timing.
Got it, great.
And then also, we have, with the restrictions lifted, we are moving forward with programming. We just had our first meeting for the Outrigger Canoe Club. If you're not, if you weren't able to make the meeting, but are still interested in joining the team, whether it be competitive or recreational, please contact us here at City Hall, as well as our website at recreation.cityofavalon.com. The canoes will be here by March 27, and we're hoping to start paddling by April 4. There's a seat for everyone in the canoe, so please come on out, feel welcome. Also, a quick announcement, we're happy to announce that the karate class is almost completely full. There's maybe a couple of spots left. So if you, if you want to get in, get signed up. We're hoping also that might help teach the respect and that is needed for these kids in the community and to give them a self-assense, a self-worth, as well as the self of being able to defend themselves. I think it's going to be really positive for our community to have this, this class. Primetimers, next Wednesday, March 23, we'll be having lunch with Norman Rockwell, or at least his paintings, at the Catalina Island Museum, starting at 11:00 AM. We'll have a docent who will talk us through this, through the exhibit, explain the significance of the work. From there, we'll have lunch at the atrium and then we can, then you can wander the museum for more culture. It is $10 for non-museum members or $5 for if you are a member. Last but not least, on March 30, the Community Service Department will be participating in the job fair at Avalon Schools. We are looking to recruit young late, young adults to become rec aides to train over several years and create young leaders in the community. If there's any of the other department heads would like to join, we'd be happy to have you with us in our booth or we'll be happy to advertise for many job openings that we have with the city right now. Is there any questions?
Just, just one quick one.
Yes.
The lights that we have downtown, thinking about the people of Ukraine, can we change the color of the lights on the trees for the, to the blue and gold?
I can change, but I had them blue and gold and then for St. Patty's Day, I went down and changed them to green.
Okay.
So I can go back tonight and change them all over.
Well, I guess wait until after St. Patrick's Day.
Yeah, I will wait till after. Wasn't that yesterday, was it not?
No, it's Thursday.
Thursday.
It's this Thursday? Oh, I thought it was Thursday, okay.
Okay, thank you. I don't go downtown at night, so I'm just, thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Dave, I have a question for you, sorry. Are we offering any assistance for anyone that doesn't know how to get a permit through LA County for the Fall Fest?
Yes, so if, if you are looking to do a food vendor booth and it's not prepackaged or even if you're doing baked goods, you would need to get what they call a cottage industry license. If they come, if they come into us, they'll come through us, we'll help them through, through the, through the LA County Public Website to be able to sign up to get their, to get their license. Because there's a couple of things that they will need that will be, will have to walk them through.
Thank you.
Okay.
Great, I don't know how y'all did that, but thank you to make that happen. I know you all were working very hard on that. Wow. Okay, that's all of the departments. How about City Manager Report?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, just wanted to, I know Bob Greenlaw mentioned it, how quickly his team responded to the light situation down at the mole. I did want to recognize them again. They were out there that night, the next day on Sunday. I saw them last week, how quickly they replaced those poles. That was great work by, by his group. And I would like to mention to the residents and council, I know council's aware, the inaugural cruise of Disney, the Disney cruise ship Wonder will be the 31st of this month, Thursday. There will be, and congratulate Jim and his team for, for all the work they did bringing Disney to the city. We're, we're very excited about that partnership and hopefully we can expand on that in the coming months and years. But so the 31st, the morning of, Jim's going to have something going on down there and hopefully we can make arrangements with Oren and down at the harbor to recognize that inaugural cruise. I want to point out to council that item number eight on your agenda tonight regarding the legislative platform has been amended since it was sent to you last week through conversations with Councilwoman LaBelle. She brought up a, a very good point. So we have included language that part of our legislative agenda will support democratic voting, fair voting legislation at the national, state, and local levels. That was not in there. I think maybe it was in there by, by proxy, but we wanted to call that out. So that was the one change made tonight to that item. And finally, I would point out, Dave Hart mentioned it, but please go to the city website if you're looking for employment. We have a number of jobs listed out there. We are looking to hire people. Great opportunity here with the city, so please go there and check out what we're offering. Thank you.
Great. And Denise?
I just have some election updates. This is for municipal election, which is being held on June 7. We've had three potential candidates that have pulled papers for mayor and four for council. The signature verification is being conducted now by the county and we'll be, be reporting back on who are the qualified candidates. We have been promised that we'll have all that by Friday, this Friday, March 18. Just a reminder that there are two measures on the ballot this year. There will be a quarter percent transient and use tax and then a one-point increase to the TOT, which will go into our general fund. A copy of these complete measures can be located on the city website. We have a whole link for election information. An impartial analysis was provided by our city attorney and it's currently being reviewed before we post it. Arguments for or against the measures have to be in the city clerk's office by this Friday at 5:00 PM, which is March 18. rebuttals are due to those arguments the following Friday, which is March 28. And then there's a whole bunch of dates, but the most important ones, I think, right now, the vote by mail will start being mailed out on May 9. And then sample ballots are being, start to be put out in the mail on May 17. And May 23 will be the last day to register to vote, so. And the complete canvas of our election, the due date for that is July 7, the whole month later for the official.
Okay, great. And how about city attorney?
Two things. At the end of this month, I'll be meeting with the League of California Cities on the Brand Act legislation to try and get that forwarded to, so we can have that in effect as quickly as possible, not as it's currently contemplated to be 2026, I'm there, 2024. And then there is another bill that's been introduced on the Brand Act via telecommunications meetings. This one would still allow us to meet via telecommunications, but would require council members to keep their video on at all times during meetings. So that's, that's a brand new one that was introduced recently. So we're monitoring both of those. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, council?
I just have something silly. For those who know me, I hate daylight savings time. I hate it. But the US Senate unanimously approved extending daylight savings time permanently. So now they just have to wait for the House Representatives to approve it.
I was going to say, didn't California vote to?
We, we did, but they can't do anything until the federal government approves it.
Oh, I see.
And so, yeah.
Okay.
So now we're waiting for the House of Representatives to, to approve it. It's not normal.
Let's go.
That's my only tidbit tonight.
Okay, love it. Lisa?
Met with the LA Orange County Broadband Regional Consortium Group and Catalina Broadband regarding internet services and then also had Reverend, Dr. Reverend Williams on the island since our last council meeting to do surveys. Our goal was to receive at least 1% of the community, which is just 40 surveys. And as of the middle of this past week, we were already at, I think, 52. So got a significant number. We'll have some more info and updates hopefully on a lot of that coming up relatively soon. And then have the CARB meeting coming up on the 24th, which is a Thursday, which is also the day that the lovely Monroe family comes into town for a special wedding that weekend of one of our city employees. So hoping the CARB meeting isn't 75 hours long.
Who actually put together the broadband survey?
It was the, the consortium. There's a lot of questions I had on it as well and some feedback we have, but yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And then last but not least, also excited to hear about the daylight savings time. There's actually studies, medical studies about how it helps to avoid an increase in traffic accidents, an increase in heart attacks, and an increase in illnesses. So I'm all for it. Let's go. It's, it's frigging time.
Let's go back to real time.
Or stay in daylight savings time, whichever you want to do. Yeah, we'll see what happens, but it's exciting to see something going properly.
Yessen?
Yes, a couple of things from me. I do have a reminder that Su Casa and the Women's Forum have their community building night next Thursday, March 24, 6 to 8:00 PM at the school library. And I did want to also thank Captain Bedali and his deputies for starting the engagement at the city park. Um, I know there's a lot of work to do, but, um, and more involvement, but, uh, it's a hopeful introduction, and, so thank you for that. Um, and how our chief, um, Mike Allegria had mentioned, thanks to Herlinda, we were able to distribute actually, uh, about, uh, the home COVID test, and we were able to do about 50 households, it's a big number, so thank you for that. Um, and then we and Lisa had a very constructive and effective phone call with, uh, LBCC and Herlinda Chico about, um, the transformation from juniors and seniors going to the mainland. Um, there should be some events in the future that we'll have with them, but as we get those details together, we'll update you guys.
That's excellent, excellent.
Yeah, that's a good call.
Uh, I attended the Catalina, our broadband group meeting as well with Lisa, um, and I will be attending the CARB meeting on the 24th, and then I think we have another broadband meeting on the 18th that I need to get some details for as well.
Same.
Um, so, yeah, that's it for me.
Great. I, um, while back, we've talked about it very, very briefly, about looking at providing, uh, our own public health department or meeting with Long Beach, and in the last few days, I've been down walking around a lot, and I've heard some very disturbing news about the lady that comes over here from the Health Department. Um, one of them is with Caleb, one of them is with that nut store that's trying to get going, the ice cream shop that the Carsons put in, and the donut shop. And number one, the response time is insane, number two, what I understand is one time it'll be, this is the kind of, that board you have to put across, this is what you put in, and then, oh, no, 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 that's not it, now you need something else, and they're having to pull things out. There's just a lot of complaints, and I was hoping, I think Caleb went to the Health Department over town with someone that had a badge, uh, and after being treated rudely and saying, "Come back," and all of this stuff, the person who was with him showed the badge, and they, "Oh, oh," and then they helped him right away. So I don't know, I don't know who the conversation should be with, maybe also talking with, with John Gilbert to see what's going on, because I know he's, I believe he's been frustrated with it as well. I mean, they'll say, you need, she'll say, "Okay, you need a 30-gallon water, hot water tank," and they'll put in the 30-gallon hot water tank, and then she'll go, "Well, not that kind, it's gotta be some other kind," and then they have to take that one out, and it's very expensive. So, um, that's just for businesses I know that have, that have had difficulty with them. So I'm not sure how we want to deal with that, but.
I think it would behoove us to, to put together in a discussion higher up at the LA County level, I mean, obviously, as, as, you know, the wife of the person who does 50% of all the refrigeration in town, I could tell you a thousand stories, um, of, of uncomfortable situations, right, wrong, however you want to look at it, letter of the law, spirit of the law, all of that, but, um, I think that, that being part of the Health Department, or having LA County Health Department is part of our, uh, contract agreement with LA County, which is, you know, it is what it is, but I, in, at least in the eight years I've sat up here, we have really not delved into higher-level conversations with LA County, and, and I think we, we, we really should.
Right.
Um, the, LA County is one of the most strict counties in Southern California, first and foremost, but also, um, you know, it, because it's inconvenient to come over here, it's inconvenient for a lot of things. We need to find a way to make that more convenient, and whether that is some sort of county-subsidized travel, I, you know, I don't know what it is, or whether we have somebody on the regular, every other week, they're here for a full day, whether we need it or not, you know, something, there's a lot of solutions around what we can do there. We've, we've talked in other times about, uh, at the beginning of the COVID, if you remember the, the COVID, if you remember how ugly it was, you know, people were all over Facebook and whatnot, saying, "Go to Orange County, and let's get a different county." It's, it's really not that easy, but, but I think you're right, we need to pull together higher-level conversations.
And maybe find out, maybe get with the Caleb's and Ice Cream, I mean, that, that little night, that, an ice cream store, oh my God, you know, they're just about ready to go broke and lock out the door. I mean, it's, it's ridiculous, it has taken that much month, many months to build a little like, you know, a little nut shop.
Yeah.
So I don't know if you would, even talking to some of these folks that I'm talking about, and see, because it might just be who they have assigned to here.
Yeah.
Um, as well.
And, and to your comment about inconvenient, we should never be inconvenient.
No, absolutely not.
We, we are, you know, Audra sent us an email in regards to Avalon not qualifying on a map.
Right.
Because we make too much money, but I'm sorry, the people who are the working poor here on this island are working multiple jobs, which makes it ridiculous for census that they have, that they can, it's not like we can bring anybody in here to work. That's the inconvenience is to live here. But for them to get on a boat or a helicopter to come over here to do their job, that is not inconvenience. That's, that's, they're gonna get in a car to drive anywhere else in LA County. It's like when I would go to league events for where we had to vote to get to a meeting to find out that there wasn't a quorum, because enough cities in, the 88 cities couldn't get there, but yet I got on a boat, get in a car, and spend the night, it, it, it's frustrating in that, just because we're on an island, we are not the inconvenience. This is where we are, we are part of your county, take care of us.
So that's a point.
Sorry, so, but.
We're saying the same thing, I'm saying.
Yeah, it's, it's just, yeah.
We would do better to set up a set schedule that they're here every.
And I, and I agree, and I'm, I'm sorry that, that there are issues with the person that they do send over here, they're just not nice.
No, yeah.
You know, there's, there's rules, but there's no reason to be obnoxious about it.
Well, I meant to be arbitrary, and, okay, now you change it to your, I mean, anyway, so anyway, we're putting that back in your lap, but thank you very much, and that's all I have. Okay, um, we, oral communication, this is an opportunity for people to speak on items that are not on the agenda, you will be limited to two minutes, and no action will be taken.
Mayor, I do have two ecomments, the first, but these are addressing, um, some of the department head reports, the first one is from Carl Johnson, and this would be talking maybe to Chief Allegria. What about loading and unloading zones? The way I understand it, there are loading and unloading zones on every block, like handicap parking. Some are not being utilized for these purposes, and a delivery business or taxi that may need to make a stop on the lower blocks would be able to avoid being part of the parking problem and run more efficiently. Is this being considered too, and what is the thoughts on that? The second, um, e-comment is from Carl Johnson also, and this would be for Captain Bedali, what is the brand and name of the body cameras that the sheriffs will be using? It would be good information for anyone that is savvy with making investment decisions.
Investment. You can talk with them offline on that one, Captain. Consent calendar?
Thank you, Mayor. So what we have on the consent calendar tonight are the, seeking approval of the minutes from the March 1st, 2022 council meeting, uh, the warrants seeking approval of total expenditures from February 21st through March 4th, 2022, totaling $933,303.57. Um, our ongoing findings continue to hold remote teleconference virtual city council meetings pursuant to Assembly Bill 361. Uh, in this, council needs to determine the COVID-19 state of emergency as proclaimed by the governor still exists, and has been considered by city council in deciding to continue to have the teleconference meetings, and that as a result of the COVID-19 emergency, meeting in person would present imminent risk to the health and safety of attendees. Item four, uh, second reading, adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 9-1.01 of Title IX, Planning and Zoning of the Avalon Municipal Code related to the Planning Commission membership, and, uh, this is adopt an ordinance, City of Avalon amending that section, the Planning and Zoning Code and the Avalon Municipal Code relating to Planning Commission members. Um, item five, city renewal of the General Service Agreement with LA County, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a general service agreement with Los Angeles County for a five-year term beginning July 1st, 2022. Um, item six, amendment of the per capita parks improvement front street shade structure, authorize the amendment to the per, per capita parks improvement scope of work. Uh, item seven, designate Kiko Incorporated as a sole-source vendor and authorize purchase of pumps and water supply stanchions for the Harbor Waste Pump Out Dock. Um, as a sole-source, um, vendor and authorize procurement for the city's purchasing policy of two parastallic pumps, two water supply stanchions, and a pump alarm system from Kiko Pump, and equipment that meets the specifications for the Harbor Waste Pump Out Dock, for a total not to exceed $56,440. And item eight is the City of Avalon Legislative Platform for the 2022 Legislative Session, uh, as amended as I discussed earlier, and we are seeking to adopt the City of Avalon's Legislative Platform for 2022 that guides the city's support or opposition to regional, state, and federal legislation, and authorize city staff to conduct or contact state and federal representatives to advocate for legislative proposals consistent with the guiding principles and policies outlined within the platform. And, uh, the last item on the consent calendar is, uh, an item, um, where the city, uh, council is acting, uh, as Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees, and that is to acknowledge receipt and file of the report of the CEO Board Report and the CFO's monthly narrative analysis.
I would like to poll items six and eight.
Six is all for me.
For discussion, not poll it off the agenda.
I'll make a motion for items one through five, seven, and nine.
I'll second.
Move in second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. And item number six, I'm glad we're moving ahead with this, this is, this is really awesome. I spoke to the city manager, David, though, and I don't know if he chatted with you some of my thoughts, um, and I, and we chatted about it a little bit too, but talking about arts in public places, and I'm, um, in however we might go forward in looking at art, art in public spaces, whether it be through competition, I mean, whatever we want to do, I'm a little concerned with the, the single post, cause like, when we talked about it, how do you design art around a single post, I don't know if one of them may be a four-post, so that if we had, I don't know if the art pieces would be big, not knowing what we want to go for, I just don't want us to limit it somehow by, if the single post gets more in the way than maybe the four-post, I don't know, and, and in the integrity of the structure as well with the four-post versus the one, I mean, I'm gonna leave that all up to you all, but, um, I appreciate you.
We, we can have a discussion about that later, for this, for this, uh, item, it's really about being able to say, cause it's been approved to be along the Serpentine Wall, and we've realized that structurally, it's not sound for us to put it into the Serpentine Wall.
Okay.
And so with the planters having the trees being pulled out, we saw those as opportunities to now move the shade structures in there, as well as the, um, shade structures that are in the meridian of, um, right across from Coney, in between Coney Island and, and Antonio's there, and that, in that little area, um, those need to be, um, redone as well, and so we saw an opportunity to maybe move the shade, shade structures into those sections as well. Um, we have an idea of what we, what we'd like to put in those places, but we're still open, um, to, to ideas, we haven't, we haven't solidified what we're putting there, we're just asking to be able to move the shade structures, um, to those areas.
Okay, great.
And then my, my comment, which I've talked with David about already as well, is, um, wanting to see, there were a number of people that approached us wanting to know why they couldn't put some climate of greenery and/or tree back in those spaces, so that it's suggestions of looking at whether it's a combination shade structure and tree, or something to that nature, there's some ideas we've looked at in terms of design, uh, either single post and tree running, like, around the base of the tree, or four-post like you're talking about, and even having growth coming up over the top of it, so like, thinking of like wisteria vine or something like that, that might be not crazy high water necessary, but beautiful enough to add some green back into that space. Um, so I think if we can look at that, but yes, I would agree that it makes sense to not move forward with putting them into the Serpentine Wall the way we originally had intended, so.
Yeah, oh, that was, okay. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve item six.
I'll second.
Off in the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. So, on these guiding principles, I was interested in this legislative stuff, it was interesting that when I was talking to one of the staff about something, and she, it was Devon, and she was referring to the document, like if we could move forward in doing this, you know? It was about changing the name of the post office, because Margarita has requested that the post office be changed to Catalina Island, um, post office, and, um, it takes an act of Congress, literally, to do that, and so we were gonna write a letter and, and, but she was saying, "Well, I think it falls within here somewhere." So I appreciate the fact that staff is looking at that, but I'm a little concerned about us looking at that, because there's a lot of things in here, uh, along with the general plan, so, you know, keeps talking about renewable energy and, and, uh, greenhouse gas emissions, things that make our environment cleaner, and, and that comes through a lot, it makes me think of golf carts, it makes me think of CARB, and we talk about, there's a lot of people who contact about being, we'd be a great place for a test case, and we say that would be nice, but we don't move forward. And I think we have to make those leaps of faith at some point to get some of this stuff done, and I don't think that some of this we can do just with the stuffing we have, we need some other people to come in and, and give us those innovations, I think. I know we hear CRNRs talking about whatever they're talking about for renewable, or whatever they want to do, we're not hearing much on those fronts, and, uh, I would like us to just get more involved and really follow what we're saying we want to do in this legislative platform, that's all, just more of a comment.
But the legislative pa, platform is just that, it's just the platform, it's, it's just our guidance.
I know, but the thing is, let's use it, let's just not file it and say, "Okay, let's actually work on some of these things we need to work on."
But this is not that part of, this is the part of it, of us being able to get to the, that spot, that we could use it. This is, this is our, our guide, to get the legislature to approve that we want to move forward with these things.
Okay, but, but it also is governing, it's also governing us, it's giving us also direction.
Right.
Right, but it's, but it's not, but, but this is more of us, this is what we're gonna try as a community to legislatively get to where we want to go.
I understand that, but, but, okay, we know how successful we've been with our legislators, so I'm saying that some of this stuff, it's in here, that these are things we care about, and we want them to help us with, but we need to help ourselves as well, we need to take some action, that's all.
I think we're all on the same page, you're just saying it's a call to action to try to actually implement like this.
I just don't want it like this and then put it over here.
Right.
That's it.
It should be present all the time and be on, yeah, and then this also, what I appreciate about this, allows city staff to move forward in certain things without having to seek approval of council, it's already part of our legislative platform, it allows us to move forward much faster.
Exactly.
So, yeah.
Exactly.
Letters of support and things like that.
Correct.
We don't have to bog up the process by.
Waiting for a meeting.
Waiting for council to approve a letter, if it's within our purview, then yes, they can.
But I think still, though, and we haven't done any of this as a body, as this body of five, is to really place our priorities, you know, in regards to the general plan or whatever, we need to, so then that when something comes up, we don't want to waste our time with something, and, anyway.
I think it's good homework for right now, as we move towards the budgeting process.
Right.
To really make sure that we're bringing notes and recommendations from the general plan, from the local coastal plan, from the legislative platform, that you want to say, "This is my priority this time, let's do this," and seeing where that fits with also what's necessary.
Exactly. Okay, so, is there a motion to adopt the legislative?
I'll make a motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Move in a second, if no further comments, call, Senator, do you have any comments? I'm sorry.
I'm okay, thank you, Annie.
Uh-huh, okay. Call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. Item number 10.
Item number 10, general business, we have a, uh, a resolution, Mr. Greenlaw and Susanna Gutierrez are here to speak on this, uh, seeking approval of the Resolution for Encroachment Permit for Frontage Improvements 201 East Whitley, and authorize staff to negotiate with the property owners to determine the amounts of the required bond and liability insurance.
of the required bond and liability insurance. Bob?
Good evening. Bob Greenlaw, once again Director of Public Works, and as city manager said, Susanna Gutiérrez is here with me to help me with this. We also have the applicant Mark Passvier here in the audience that he can address any questions that you may have. So some background here, so we can put it in the record. The applicant, Mark Passvier, is requesting approval of setback variance and site approval plan, companion applications to allow the remodel of an existing portion within the city right of way and required front setback located at 201 East Whitley in the high-density residential zone. The scope of work includes alterations to structures currently located within the front setback extending into the city right of way, which also require approval and encroachment from the city council. The project is in the coastal zone and exempt from coastal development permit according to municipal code section nine dash eight, one oh two B one, and the project is categorically exempt under section fifteen three oh one of the state SEQA guidelines, existing facilities. The project will require two approvals to move forward, one being the planning commission review for variance in site approval. The project requires a setback variance as any projection deck or balcony in excess of six inches above the approved grade may not encroach into the required setbacks without obtaining a variance. The variance request is scheduled to be brought before the City of Avalon Planning Commission tomorrow night, and the project will also require a site approval plan for the necessity of the encroachment permit. And then also, it will acquire approval of an encroachment permit, and that's why we're here tonight. All major encroachments, including encroachments for permanent structures above, on, or beneath the surface such as those for decks, require approval by the city council from the Avalon Municipal Code four dash nine oh one oh five A. Upon staff discussion, it was determined that the property owner must first receive approval of the encroachment as the existing footprint already occupies a portion of the public-owned street on East Gridley. Once approved, the planning commission would be able to make the necessary findings to authorize proposed improvements involved in the site plan review and issue of a variance. And you can see from the picture, we're looking at the subject property, and what's existing there now is the planters and the front steps, and so, and that's usual within, those are the types of encroachments, minor encroachments, they're happening in many of the houses that front our streets here. But what the applicant's trying to do is actually move some of the living room space into the existing porch, and then move the porch three foot into that planter space. So you have an area that is not just planters or steps, which is the usual circumstance, we also have an exclusive use of three foot of space for porch. So that's the difference here.
And with it built out like that, he's going to be able to get the stairs down to the property, legal stairs?
It'll still have the same line in the front that it has now, it's just, yes.
Oh, it's just that's coming down, okay.
Yes. So we're not, he's not going to be encroaching any further into the city right of way, it's just going to reconfigure that. And you'll see that at the front bricks there, there's actually a parking spot that's going to be onsite parking now to the right-hand side of where those stairs are. And so that's a big benefit for the area there, because there is no parking onsite now, so he's making some onsite parking. So it's kind of a swap out for that use of the public space for the patio, the porch there, that he's actually going to have some onsite parking there that'll be underneath.
Where the green, where the planter is.
Where the planter is to the right.
For some reason, the pictures aren't displaying on the, for the video feed for those at home.
Okay.
We've just got your computer that says Whitney, picture number one, two, three, et cetera.
Huh, weird.
Matt?
Is there already an encroachment permit for what's there now?
No, there was a building permit, and I can present that information, I'm almost done here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I thought you were.
I just, I just wanted to reflect on this picture at that moment.
Can I ask you a question about the picture, then? Just so I understand it? So, so they're asking to move, I'm just going to do this, I'm going to approach the bench, your honor. They're asking to move the house out to here, right, the living room here, and then the porch will come out from the white fence out to the street line, but they'll still have the stairs?
Yeah, let's look at the side view.
That's what I was confused with the, what we have.
Okay.
So from here to here, there will be porch, but the living room will come out to here.
Three, three feet of that will be the porch. Okay, three.
How many is this?
Actually, both, like, may I?
Yes.
Approach the bench.
Wait, I have a question. Actually, ladies, some misunderstanding.
Come up to the mic, I just heard.
There may be some misunderstanding, because we are not looking to extend the porch out. The porch, the outline of the porch stays where the outline of the porch is, where actually the porch that is currently five foot deep is only going to be three foot deep.
Because you're taking two feet?
I'm taking two feet into the living room. And then what we are looking to do, what we were looking to see on the previous picture, is what is currently the public right of way, so we're not further encroaching into the public right of way. We're just looking to change the public right of way area by moving the stairs entirely to the left, because right now, as you see on the slope, the stairs on the right-hand side needs to cover the highest distance, and by, by moving that stairs to the left, we'd rather have to only travel the shortest distance, and that will allow access.
And that's what I thought in the original, and so I'm like, okay, I'm getting confused, because I thought they were going to push the steps further up the hill to make it easier to get up and down.
That is, that is true and correct. It will go. So the public, the public right of way.
Is existing.
Yeah.
I will say that that has answered my questions. I have a better visual of it now, so I'm fine.
So the footprint of the existing property, the outline of the existing house is not changing. Rather, a portion of the porch is converted into living room.
And the golf cart will be parked where the planter is now?
Yes, they are actually, as you said, due to the geometry, we're right at the lowest peak, and we're actually encroaching under the house so the golf cart can go under.
Okay, okay. So the line of sight?
The line of sight actually either improves or stays the same, was my only concern, which that answers the question.
Yep.
Absolutely correct.
That's what I was worried about, was that it was, the porch will come all the way out to that property line on the encroachment, you wouldn't be able to see anything up the street.
And that's why I was getting confused, because I was thinking, no, I thought they were relocating the stairs further up, so that was easier to get in and out.
Okay, so.
No, I think you're good.
So, to be clear here, it's right where the roof line is, we'll still be under that same roof line.
No, no change in from there.
Okay, so I think what's happened is there may be a dated set of plans that we're, that I was speaking of. Okay, so that makes it better, there's not any change to exclusive use of space, really is, we're back to that, planters, it's steps, like we've been talking about before, that's common, you know, that's what the things that we're allowing, encroachment permit, not exclusive use of space. And we're getting a benefit from having that golf cart.
Cool, that's great. All right. Somebody want to authorize?
Is that enough information for you to make?
Sure. Somebody want to adopt the resolution?
The only question I have, just for city staff on this, is that we, looking at the issuance of encroachments and the upkeep and maintenance of those, I know currently the onus is on the owner to keep that up. I would like to see us have some sort of way to manage that. I think it's become more and more common for us to talk about these now because of certain projects that are happening now, but making sure that the city staff has on their radar that there's a five-year alarm, minus maybe thirty days or sixty days, to say, hey, you're up for your new renewal, we haven't received this yet, can we please go after this and get the appropriate bond, the appropriate insurance, the appropriate whatever it is we need for that, so that's the only.
That would be a great thing to add to our inspection program.
Well, and that's, go ahead, Dave.
I was just going to say, I think that's a great, a great point, and now that we are going to be presenting these to council in the form of legislation, a resolution, we'll be able to more easily get that on our agenda in the future to recognize these resolutions, to bring them back to you.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve encroachment permit for frontage improvements at 201 East Whitley and authorize city staff to negotiate with the property owners to determine the amount of the required bond and liability insurance.
Okay.
I'll second.
Call for the vote, do we have anybody calling in? Denise?
No ecomments.
Okay.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. There you go. Okay. Item number eleven.
Item number eleven, outdoor dining program, we are revisiting this after last fall, and we're seeking authorization to implement an outdoor dining program that would be in place through June of 2024 unless earlier rescinded by city council or city manager.
Yay for outdoor dining?
The what?
Yay for outdoor dining?
Yay for outdoor dining, yeah, I'm all for this, all for it, love to see how it goes.
Do we want to end it in June, or just go ahead and get it, and go ahead and plan for the season?
I don't want to end it, and I don't think I want to see the limit that we have currently set as the number of tables for it either.
Okay, I.
I still want to limit.
I think we can limit the number of tables, but I think it looks nice when there's a full beach versus six or eight tables sitting by themselves in a little circle.
But that's only if one person decides to do it.
It's very true.
Once everybody else is doing it, it's not going to look like that.
I know.
It is very, very popular, and I am a little bit concerned about the, I think we're talking about thirty-two chairs, I would like to reduce the number of chairs. I think it really, really, really gets crowded, and we know where the biggest congestion is. I have a little trouble with thirty-two chairs personally, I would like it to be twenty-four, but that's for us to vote on. And my other thing for consideration, as you talk about on the beach only, that space by the Wrigley Plaza stage is very, very, very open, and a lot less congested than the beach, and so I would like to recommend that that space be available if, if, let's say Dave Hurley, he wanted it, or if Steve Hayes wanted to use part of that, that they work something out, I would like to see that area included in it as well.
And then there's also the space next to Antonio's. There's a few restaurants down that way, too.
That's island company, though, right?
Is all of that?
We got the palm tree.
Yeah.
Is it, do you, I don't think all of that is island company, though.
So right where the kiddie pool used to be, where the palm tree is, that, that's where the, approximately the city property line is, and everything else is the island company, there's a notch there from the old pier that was there, and, yeah.
Bummer.
That's a nice spot.
It's a great spot. So those would be only my, the two changes that I would want to make, and I guess you're probably okay on the dollar amount, but anyway, that's my two cents.
You know, I would rather go with what we've got in the staff report is in terms of numbers, and then, you know, if we felt like we needed to revisit it over the summer. I would love to see how this works without having all the stress of COVID attached to it, to just look at this as an option. Originally, I was going to bring up about in the wintertime, that must be broken down by ten PM, because that's kind of when our noise ordinance is, but I think in the wintertime, everybody's locked and loaded by seven PM anyway, so I don't think it matters to change it, I think it's better to leave it open in case we have an event or something that occurs. But honestly, Annie, I'd love to just go with it the way that it is with the number of tables, and then if we have a problem or if a concern arises, let's bring it back.
How about adding that area by the stage?
Oh, yeah, oh, totally, yep.
Let me ask Chief, do you have any comments, Chief? And how is it going when we were inspecting the places for where they put stuff up at the nighttime and all that?
I believe that's put in there that I have to go down and inspect prior to them, this being okay for them. I'm going to go down and see where they're going to store them on a nightly basis, make sure they're secure and out of the way for our guys.
And you can check them again randomly throughout?
We'll be checking randomly to make sure.
Okay, and we said no heaters, no heaters in this, so. I'm not going to say no just because I prefer to have twenty-four tables, it's not that, or twenty-four chairs, but, because it was interesting, when I did talk to a vendor about going, he said, you know, if you have twenty, you need to staff people anyway when you're down on the beach or out down on that area, so to maximize that it makes sense to be able to have the thirty-two if they so desire, so.
I think also, maybe it makes sense for us all just to make sure that on, you know, some of the busiest weekends between now and the beginning of July, that we, so, well, question is, are we extending this past June or not? Are we going to review it again? I think.
I think we should bring it back, just in case we need to modify anything, or just leave that open to come back.
The staff's proposal is to extend it all the way to June of 2024, in line with the ABC's guidelines, unless they revoke that.
To extend it to 2024.
Yeah, the year 2024.
At any time, you can mention to the city manager.
We can always, we can always bring it back, it's not, right.
I think maybe if we can just plan to all make sure, like for Memorial Day weekend, that we all plan to, whether it's downtown, be out there, but just see how it's going in the evenings to be able to make a fair assessment of if at its potential busiest peak, what does that look like? And then if we need to bring it back in July during a council meeting, we can, or in June even, before, before Fourth of July.
So before Memorial Day, they can set up at four-thirty? Read those times to be again, and then after, and then July, they set up at five, set up at five-thirty, not, not?
Right, set up, not start till five-thirty.
Start setting up, not, and that needs to be watched, I think that sometimes gets a little, they get a little anxious.
And we said no to heaters, right?
Yes.
Yes, correct.
Okay, do we have any plan, like for any trash overflow, or whose responsibility is that going to be?
The restaurant themselves, they bring down their own cans and they take the trash away.
Okay, and if it happens to become a problem, who, or is it the owner's responsibility?
Usually Eddie would tell us if he has recognized that there's restaurant trash in our city cans, and then we address it with the restaurant.
And is, did we put a little ribbon down so that they know not to go too far into the beaches, to the sand park?
They're just told, Annie, we have never walked it off.
Like before those palm trees?
And then I know that Mr. Greenlaw will bring it to city staff's attention, and then the restaurant is contacted, they've gotten too close to the seawall because that's our fear.
Because are we allowing them to go all the way to, pretty much all the way to the seawall?
No.
Eight feet in.
It was only, it was almost in line where the palm trees were, I think, they kind of did that.
I think it says eight feet in.
Okay. All right, okay, good.
All right.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the implementation of an outdoor dining program until June thirtieth, 2024, or earlier rescinded by the city council or city manager with the addition of the space in front of the Wrigley or near, around the Wrigley stage.
Great.
I'll second.
Any ecomments?
Oh, wait, we do have some members of the public here.
I know, any ecomments?
No, I'm sorry, Annie, no.
Any public comment? Okay, okay. I didn't see you sitting there, Dave Hurley, until I put my glasses on. You were behind the other Dave, and next to the other Dave. Are you, are you cool, Dave Hurley? Did you have comments or anything? Whoops, there goes Chief.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, I came down to ask the council if you would consider adding that beer garden area to. adding that beer garden area to the outdoor dining. And I think that was already brought up, and that's what I'm asking for.
You're good. Yeah. Thank you. Okay.
And I'm so sorry, I'm going to back up for one moment. That was a really great reminder because when we talked about this before, we had said, and unfortunately, David, it may be an effect for you, but there are a few times throughout the summer where we do have events or activities. And, and I think you were already agreeing to work with whoever the event coordinator was for those. Okay, perfect. I just want to make sure that we, we still need to do all of our other events, too.
Okay.
Question. Is this only dinner?
Yeah.
Because I know Dave was out there with lunch. So is it only for dinner?
It's during the specific hours.
Yeah, specific hours.
Which is either 4:30 or 5:37.
Right, okay. All right.
Oh, wait, one more question. Sorry.
Yes.
It's about the trash again. Are the restaurants themselves going to separate the trash? Is it according to SB 1383?
They will be given that direction, correct. Good question, you said, yes, they will have to.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion and seconded?
Yep.
Yeah. Councilmember De La Rosa? Councilmember Lavell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. Okay, now let's go into closed session. Okay. Good night, Tony.
Good night, Tony.
Meeting adjourned. So for those of you.